This is Rogers TV, Ottawa.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Everyone to take their seat. We'll start the meeting in one minute. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour, mesdames et messieurs.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Mayor's municipal council meeting 12th of February 2020.
For February 12, 2020. For those who are able to, would you please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing and we'll have our special guests who are going to sing "O Canada" introduced more properly. And if you can remain standing, we'll ask councillor Mean to introduce our special guests, who will sing our national anthem. Had a chance to meet these young people from St. Andrew. They have lots of great questions and we told them they're going to be on television, on Rogers Cable 22. So don't be too nervous, okay? So councillor Mean.
Thank you, your worship. It is with great pleasure this morning that I welcome St. Andrew's School Choir. They are going to be singing our national anthem today at City Hall. They are from Barhaven East, which is part of Ward 22, for those of you who are not aware. They are with Miss Kelly Grimle-Forte and their choir director, Madame Joanne Walsh. St. Andrew Catholic School has been lucky to have a choir each year since the school opened in 2003. They have students in grades three to six in their enthusiastic group this year. They are helping support the school's musical for this year. Over the years, they have participated in dramatic representations of the Stations of the Cross, school masses and assemblies, singing at the RCMP headquarters, singing songs for a variety of Rag and Bowen's Puppet Theatre Company productions, as well as singing the national anthem at 67's hockey games and for the Ottawa Fury Soccer Club. I want to thank St. Andrew's Catholic School for bringing all these lovely kids down to sing the national anthem for us this morning.
Well, that was terrific. Thank you very much to the students of St. Andrew. You really belted out the national anthem. Congratulations. It's now my pleasure to invite Jennifer Cook Beninski to come forward for this council city builder presentation. Je vais maintenant Jennifer.
I'd like to ask Jennifer to come to the podium to receive the City Builder Award today.
Or the area of Shepherd's, or of Jennifer's, rather. Hello, Jennifer. And Jennifer has a great group of friends and family here and we welcome them very much and extend a welcome to the Capital Grannies who are here. How many are Capital Grannies? There's a few of you here, I guess. One, two? Great. Well, this award, Jennifer recognizes people who've demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to making our city a better place through volunteerism and exemplary action. Jennifer has volunteered with the Shepherds of Good Hope for more than 35 years and is recognized for her steadfast commitment to supporting some of Ottawa's most vulnerable people. Her decades of work with the organization and longtime commitment as the coordinator of volunteers earned her the Shepherd of Good Hope's Calmer of Storms Award. In 2015, Jennifer participated in a neighborhood group that sponsored a refugee family from Syria and helped them settle in Ottawa. She's a member of the Writers' Union of Canada, the National Organization for Professionally Published Writers, and has published several books for children and young adults. With this literary passion, she volunteered her time reading at school, at her local school, and much further abroad, helping build and stock a library in Guinea, West Africa. A French library in West Africa, la Bibliothèque Communale Jennifer Beninski-Cook, was officially inaugurated in October 2016. Jennifer is very involved with the Stephen Lewis Foundation's Grandmothers to Grandmothers campaign, and the foundation launched the campaign in 2006 in response to the crisis faced by African grandmothers struggling to care for millions of children orphaned by HIV/AIDS. Grandmothers here in Canada work in solidarity with African grandmothers and the children in their care, an initiative that transforms lives and restores hope for communities. Her sixth book, Daughters, Mothers and Grandmothers, is a short story set in South Africa about two courageous friends and their families during the AIDS pandemic. This is a subject close to her heart and a percentage of sales of the book were designated for the Capital Grannies fundraising of the Stephen Lewis Foundation. Jennifer is indeed a compassionate and caring person who helps and inspires others by volunteering.
I'd like to thank Jennifer for her many contributions to the community and to the whole city as well.
Opportunity, Jennifer, to thank you for your many contributions, literally decades of giving back to the community. And on behalf of your colleague and my colleague and your city councillor, Ralston King, it's my pleasure to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award. Congratulations. Come on out here and we'll get a picture right here. If we just stand.
I was going to add a little bit, but I thought I'd better write it down. Mayor Watson, councillor King, the city of Ottawa and my sponsors, thank you for this award. I am honoured and will treasure it. I enjoy volunteering at Shepherd Soup Kitchen and hope to continue. The soup kitchen has changed over the years. In the beginning, we had thought it would only be for a year or two. How wrong we were. We do our best, but it's sad to see so many people living so precariously. But there is always hope for something better in their future, as well as a hot lunch prepared with love. I'd just like to finish by sharing this award and recognizing all the faithful soup kitchen volunteers. The soup kitchen can be a scary place at times, and especially the soup kitchen staff who save lives and work so hard, day after day. Thank you.
Well, thank you again, Jennifer, for your wonderful work in our community. For our next presentation, I'd invite Rideau Vanier Ward councillor, Matt Flurry, and members of the University of Ottawa Gigi's women's soccer team, as well as Sue Highland, Director of Sports Services, as well as coaching staff and athletic therapists to join me here at the podium. So these ladies and gentlemen are world champions from Ottawa U. You've got the medal out. Good. Come on over here. We'll just circle around. Well, my sincere congratulations to the University of Ottawa Gigi's women's soccer team on capturing the gold medal at the FISU University World Cup.
I'd like to congratulate the University of Ottawa Gigi's women's soccer's team on capturing the gold medal at the FISU University World Cup.
Tournament, which took place in Xinjiang, China in November. The Gigi's went undefeated and came out victorious in the final, defeating Brazil 1-0. This is an exceptional achievement.
This is the first time they've done this.
Field and in your studies to earn the title of world champions. You're wonderful role models for up and coming athletes.
You are all wonderful role models for our up and coming athletes.
City very proud. I'd like to take this opportunity, on behalf of my colleagues on city council, to congratulate the players, coach and team staff on this incredible achievement. We had an opportunity to have breakfast up in my office with a number of members of council, and while the entire team contributed to your success, I understand that there were several highlights in the tournament, including Margot Shore making a great save in the semifinal shootout to send the team to the final, and that Trinity Esprit was recognized as the tournament MVP, right here. And additionally, before winning the World Cup, the team was ranked number one in Canada and had an undefeated regular season. I know you have all worked very, very hard and now is the time to celebrate that great accomplishment. And I'd ask Margot Shore to come forward for the presentation of the proclamation, and then Margot, I believe, is going to say a few words. I won't read all the whereas's, but we're very, very proud to proclaim February 12, 2020 as University of Ottawa Gigi's FISU University World Cup Champions Day. Congratulations.
On behalf of the team, coaching staff and all the players who couldn't be here today, we just wanted to thank the mayor and all the councillors for having us out today, for welcoming us for breakfast and for giving us this award. FISU was definitely a unique experience for many of us. It was our first time playing on an international stage and we were very proud to represent the University of Ottawa, the city of Ottawa, as well as Canada at the competition. We were extremely, extremely proud to come back as the inaugural University World Cup champions, and we were really overwhelmed by the welcome we got when we landed and really since then. It's been amazing. So thank you once again for this award and the opportunity to come to City Hall today. We are very proud to have represented everyone at the tournament and thank you very much.
Well, again, congratulations. That's a remarkable achievement to be the first recognized world champion at the university games in China, and we wish you the very, very best. Congratulations. Thank you, Sue. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Concile Lulov. Councillor Dudas.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Suds.
Here.
Councillor Elchantiri.
Present.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Councillor Egli.
Councillor Deans. Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Conseil Fleury.
You see.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leaper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Here.
Conseil Cloutier.
Present.
Conseil Blé.
Present.
Councillor Druze.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Meehan.
Here.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
Carried? Declaration of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Communications as presented. Regrets, councillor Deans. Motion 20-1 of September 25th advised she would be absent from the city council meeting of the 12th of February 2020, and we've also received word that councillor Rick Shirelli will be absent from this meeting. Motion to introduce reports. Motion pourtant présentation de rapport. Councillor Lulov, second by councillor Moffett, please.
That the report for the Integrity Commissioner entitled interim report to council on an inquiry respecting the conduct of councillor Shirelli, Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report 10 and 11, Finance Economic Development Committee Report 10, Finance and Economic Development Committee and Nominating Committee Joint Report 1, Transportation Committee Report 8, and the reporter from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act, Explanations and Requirements at the city council meeting of January 29, 2020, be received and considered.
Item number one, motion appointment, Chair of Transportation Committee, councillor McKenney has a replacement motion. Like to move that, please.
Be it resolved that council amend the joint Fedco nominating committee recommendation to replace councillor Tim Tierney with councillor Jeff Leaper.
Okay.
Can I speak to it?
Sorry. No, as the clerk indicated, Fedco, we don't comment on this, we just vote on it. Mr. Clerk, is that our practice?
There is absolutely no way of commenting on why I'm moving this motion?
Mr. Clerk?
That would be my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we'll stick with that. So yays and nays, please?
Councillor Kavanaugh, yea. Councillor Deans, councillor Elchantiri.
No.
Councillor Dudas.
No.
Councillor Harder. Councillor Egli.
Councillor Shirelli.
No.
Councillor Moffett.
No.
Councillor Hubley.
No.
Conseil Cloutier.
No.
Councillor Gower.
No.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Suds.
No.
Councillor Tierney.
No.
Councillor Druze.
No.
Conseil Fleury.
Oui.
Councillor Meehan.
No.
Councillor Lulov.
No.
Conseil Blé.
No.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Leaper.
Yes.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Councillor McKenney.
Yes.
Mayor Watson.
No.
Seven yays, 15 nays.
Okay. So on to the main report from Fedco. Carried? Dissent by councillor. All right, we'll do. Do you want to do the same in reverse? No? Okay, so we'll do yays and nays on the Fedco recommendation.
Councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Deans. Councillor Elchantiri.
Yes.
Councillor Dudas.
Yes.
Councillor Harder. Councillor Egli.
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli, councillor Moffett.
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Hubley.
Yes.
Conseil Cloutier.
Oui.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor King.
No.
Councillor Suds.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
Yes.
Councillor Druze.
Yes.
Conseil Fleury.
No.
Councillor Meehan.
Yes.
Councillor Lulov.
Yes.
Conseil Blé.
Oui.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Leaper.
No.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Councillor McKenney.
No.
Mayor Watson.
Yes.
17 yays, 5 nays.
Great. Thank you. Congratulations, councillor Tierney. Next motion is Member of the Hydro Ottawa Holdings Incorporated Board of Directors. The council appoint councillor Jenis Suds as member of the Hydro Ottawa Holding Inc. Board of Directors. Carried? Thank you. Congratulations, councillor Suds. Integrity Commissioner, Commissaire à l'intégrité de la ville, interim report to council on an inquiry respecting the conduct of councillor Shirelli. I believe Mr. Marlowe is with us, and my understanding is you don't have, you have your report that's been interim report that's been tabled. You're here to answer questions. You don't have an opening statement? Okay, so I think I'm going to have to get my monitor turned on here, madam deputy clerk, so I can see who has... Councillor Kavanaugh has the floor. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the Integrity Commissioner for the work so far. We're looking at an interim report and in it, we're seeing that there's several former complaints alleging that councillor Shirelli contravened various sections of the code.
Lord councillor, can you speak up a little? It's very hard to hear.
Okay, sorry. Can the commissioner state how many formal complaints he has received?
Your worship, on that question, I would decline to answer in specifics. I chose the language several complaints.
If you can speak closer to the microphone, sorry.
Your worship, I would decline to answer in the specifics of that question due to my responsibility under the statute to maintain confidentiality. I did want to indicate to councillor, to council in my report that there were several...
Commissioner, it's very hard to hear. You're going to have to speak right into it and project.
I'll repeat again. Your worship, I would like to decline to answer in specifics as to how many complaints I am investigating. I chose the language carefully in indicating several complaints because of the duty of confidentiality that I am bound by under the municipal act.
Thank you. The report states that there's a 90-day deadline for all complaints that has passed and all parties have been notified accordingly. When did the 90-day deadline pass and when did you notify the parties accordingly?
Complaints began to roll in in September. I believe it was December 13th that I gave 90-day complaints to those. The last 90-day notice was issued on January 13.
Thank you. On page five states that in response to the respondent's position, that the Integrity Commissioner does not have jurisdiction over matters set out in the formal complaints. The commissioner determined that you have the jurisdiction and you're continuing the investigation. Particularly with the letter we received this morning, how did the Integrity Commissioner determine this matter?
I have advised the respondent that I have jurisdictions. I have determined that on the basis of the practice and the jurisprudence in Ontario for integrity commissioners. I was made aware of the letter from the respondent's lawyer last night. In my view, most of those matters raised are beyond my jurisdiction. I have a statutory mandate to investigate and I will continue to investigate.
Thank you. We knew through access to information that the billing so far has been $116,000 over three months. Was this all for investigative services or is part of this legal council in support of this investigation, based on what we've heard?
Again, your worship, I'm reluctant to confirm any details about how the investigation is unfolding, including some of its costs. I would advise councillors to wait until they receive my final report where they will then be able to make a reasoned and reasonable evaluation of the costs of the investigation.
Thank you. In terms of the respondent, so far he has not responded and there is no comments from him. Is it possible to subpoena the respondent?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last phrase.
Supina. Is it possible to subpoena the respondent in the future?
Yes, the investigations are being conducted under the Public Inquiries Act and I have the ability to subpoena witnesses if necessary.
Thank you. And clearly, the respondent is not available, but that you've given in your statement, reasonable amount of time is required for this. What would you determine to be a reasonable amount of time to lapse for the respondent to recover?
Given the letter that I received yesterday, I intend to continue that discussion with the respondent's council and try to determine a specific date for his participation, should he choose to do so.
How long will the council know that the commissioner has chosen to resume and conclude the investigation?
I'm sorry, councillor. Again, I didn't hear the first part of your...
Okay. When will we know that you've chosen to resume and conclude the investigation?
There are two possibilities. The first would be that I would file another interim report because of some sort of delay, interruption or interference. The other would be my final report to council.
What would happen, and I realize this is hypothetical, if the respondent was no longer a councillor, would the investigation continue?
That is speculative, councillor, but I can say that once an investigation has begun, it should be concluded and a report should be filed with council.
Thank you. In the report, you make it clear that it's a verbal, sorry, plural, and so we know that there is multiple formal complaints that have been received. Can the commissioner comment on his... Sorry to recommend certain sanctions per complaint.
Councillor, I would decline to answer specifically to that question. Investigations can be complicated. There is jurisprudence in Ontario that gives the Integrity Commissioner great latitude in combining complaints and narrowing complaints and adding dimensions to certain complaints as the evidence is received. So I'm reluctant right now to give you any indication as to how recommendations would line up in terms of the numbers of complaints that I have.
But it's within their power in terms of if there's different complaints, let's say A, B, C, D, that it is possible to have sanctions. say A, B, C, D, that it is possible to have sanctions based on, sanction based on A, sanction based on B, sanction based on C separately?
I would respond, your worship, that each complaint requires its own finding, and so you can assume that it falls in some sort of recommendation follows.
Up until now, you've done investigations, and you've made a recommendation in terms of a sanction of X number of days, in terms of withhold of pay. We have up to 90 days, is what the municipal act says. But in this case, we have multiple complaints, and we have multiple cases. So, it is conceivable that you could have multiple requests that would add up. Is that the case?
It's conceivable.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr Marlowe, just on the issue if the individual does not cooperate, you're still able to continue drafting your report and bringing forward a final report, even if you have not been successful in convincing the individual to respond to your inquiries?
There is at least two precedents in the province of Ontario where integrity commissioners have reported without the participation of the respondent.
Okay, councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, your worship, and good morning to everyone. Just two questions. Do you anticipate a...
As to whether or not the bills are reasonable, I work with the city solicitor and with other people with regards to making a determination if it is in fact reasonable under all the circumstances.
So, given that there are multiple circumstances at play, and we're likely to exceed the annual budget line for this account, is it your, or the city manager's, is it your opinion or the city manager's opinion that we will continue to incur costs that are reasonable in order to see this investigation concluded?
Yes, Mr Mayor, in fact, picking up from what the integrity commissioner said, I believe that the investigations are going to continue in this matter, so there will be some additional costs which we will be paying for.
All right, thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Menard, please.
Thanks very much, thanks very much, Mr Mayor. Just similar to my colleagues' questions, you know, if I look at the timeline that we've gone through here, the amount of money that's being spent on it, the public's owed a report on this. And so, you know, we've had since between September 17th and October 15th, you provided Mr Shirelli with a notice of inquiry. On October 3rd, Mr Shirelli released a statement denying some, but not all, of the allegations. On November 6th, he was well enough to attend the city council meeting, gave an exclusive interview to CTV. On November 30th, as a councillor, Mr Shirelli was well enough to participate in the OC transport food drive at Loblaw's in Bell's Corners. On December 11th, as a councillor, Mr Shirelli was well enough to attend the city council meeting. On December 13th, there was an announcement that he was admitted to hospital for quadruple bypass surgery. And on February 12th today, Mr Shirelli submitted another public response via his lawyer demonstrating, questioning the process. So, we've been through it here. Given the response time, the 10-day response time you've provided, all the opportunity that's been provided throughout, and the public appearances, and clearly acting as councillor, to the point that we removed the councillor colleagues that were taking care of his duties, it seems fair to the public, to me, that they would expect a report fairly quickly, given the situation, and the respect for the process. So, I guess my question is, how much deference are we gonna provide here, given the situation?
Through you, Mr Mayor, to the councillor, the deference that I am providing is only dictated by the principles of natural justice and procedural fairness in a situation where a medical condition has been claimed to be a delay factor. As to the amount of time that has gone by, all I will say, given the release of the figure under AMPHIPA for the cost of the investigation, is council will have to wait to make that judgment when I file my final report, and you see how many witnesses were interviewed, how many hours were spent on those interviews, and the dimension of the investigation will enlighten you, I think, at that time. But I am cautious not to comment in any more detail.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions to the integrity commissioner? Mr Commissioner, do you have anything else to add?
No, I'm fine, thank you very much, Mr Mayor, councillors.
Okay, thank you very much, received. Committee reports, rapport des comités, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report Number 10, rapport numéro 10 du comité de l'agriculture et des affaires rurales. Item number four, zoning bylaw amendment 4837 Albion Road, modification de règlement de zonage 4-8-3-7 chemin Albion. Carried? ARAC report number five, Flouellen Special Study Area in Goulburn Wetland Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment, modification de règlement de zonage de plan officiel concernant l'aire d'étude spéciale de Flouellen et les terres humides de Goulburn. Dissent by councillor Menard?
I have a question to staff about it.
Okay, is it, do you think it's a long one, or should we come back?
It's not that long, I just, I want to hear staff's view on this.
Okay, well we'll come back then to that one. Item six, zoning bylaw amendment 5651 First Line Road, modification de règlement de zonage 5-6-5-1 chemin First Line. Carried, adopté? Item seven, Kilmorey House 21, Withrow, special levies maison Kilmorey 21, Avenue, Withrow. Carried? Item eight, disposal of 755 Somerset Street West to the Somerset West Community Health Centre, session de 5-7-7 rue Somerset West au centre de santé communautaire Somerset West. Carried? Item nine, we've been waiting for this, the Canada North Mosquito Control Program, special levy, programme de lutte contre les mosquites de Canada North. Carried? Item 10, motion waive section 1.1 of the appointment policy, motion sans prendre l'application de point 1.1 de la politique de nomination, appointing Patrick Ledoux-Sur to finish his term. Are you dissenting? Dissent by councillor Fleury. Bulk consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda is presented? Carried? So we'll go back to the item councillor Menard had a question on, Flouellen Special Study. Councillor Menard?
Thanks, thanks very much, Mr Mayor. I wanted to get staff opinion on this, because I know, I think there's a divergence between what we saw passed at ARAC and staff's view of the item. And so, if staff could just provide council with an overview of what their position is on this item, and why the motion that we have is deviating from staff recommendation?
So, Mr Mayor, I will actually ask Dr Stowe to answer the first part of the question. Staff is capable of telling you the background of the story and the basis for staff's position, which has not changed. Excuse me. Staff can give the background to our staff position, and I will reiterate to council, staff position has not changed from the staff report. I don't think it's reasonable to ask staff to answer the question of the motivations for the motion. I'm sorry councillor, we can't answer that question, it's not appropriate to us, but I will ask Dr Stowe to give you the background that you've required.
Mr Mayor, as Mr Willis has said, we stand by our original recommendation. We feel that the recommendations we brought forward were consistent with all of the policies of the official plan and the provincial policy statement, which requires the city to designate as significant wetlands in our official plan, those wetlands which have been identified as provincially significant by the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry. And in this case, based upon the wetland evaluation work that was done as part of the Flouellen Special Study Area process, wetlands were identified outside of the special study area overlay. They were confirmed by the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry as provincially significant, and so it's our advice that they should be designated significant in the official plan.
Okay, and so, why are the wetlands which are outside the FSSA, which are considered provincially significant by OMBNRF, not being designated as such in the official plan now? This motion would essentially not designate them, is that, do I have that correct?
That's correct, through you, Mr Mayor. The motion that was approved at ARAC would not designate wetlands outside the special study overlay as significant in the official plan.
Okay, and so, does the city have to consider these protected anyways? I mean, you know, regardless of whether the OP covers them or not, would they be protected in any event?
Through you, Mr Mayor, if a development application came up that affected one of the wetlands, we're talking about those that are identified as provincially significant but not designated, it would be staff's advice that they must still be considered provincially significant wetlands under the provincial policy statement and the policies of the official plan, and staff would be obliged to oppose development or site alteration within those wetlands.
Okay, and in Dr Nick Stowe's presentations from the meeting, slide nine says that "our decision to ARAC to limit the zoning change to the original study area established in 2005-2006 was an administrative decision meant to clarify to landowners that wetland designation and associated zoning is a provincial imperative, not municipal." So, this was in slide nine, summary of the PSW presentation. So, I'm just trying to understand more what that means to us, if it's a provincial imperative, not municipal, and they're clarifying to landowners that wetland designation is provincial, why aren't we designating it? I'm having trouble reading the motion that came from ARAC when our staff are saying that we should be...
Mr Mayor, I'll reiterate what I said earlier, staff stands by its original recommendation?
Yeah, maybe, maybe. I mean, it'd be great to hear from councillors that passed this at the committee, because right now I'm not in favor of what we have in front of us on that third point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments, councillor Moffett?
Just to provide the necessary background to the questions that staff are not in the position of answering, there's obviously a long, convoluted history on this that predates myself, it predates my predecessor, it goes back to 2005, in a development application and the requirement for environmental impact statements, that turned into this report 15 years later. So, in 2009, the community was expecting, residents were expecting a certain boundary to be looked at. There was time given, it was an OMB-approved process, the Flouellen Special Study Area came from the Ontario Municipal Board decision on this, to review wetland boundaries within that designated area. The community was given, residents were given opportunities to address issues, to further review the wetland boundaries on their own property, of which some did, and those have been reflected in the 2016 mapping. Unfortunately, in the 2016 mapping, the consultant that was hired went well beyond the regulated area that was expected to be looked at. So, from a resident's perspective, those who were involved in this process from 2009, they understood what was happening in this space. Unfortunately, those outside the Flouellen Special Study Area were not aware that they were going to be impacted by the Flouellen Special Study Area policies and the review that came from that. So, those impacted post-2016 are different from the folks that have been involved in this for 15 years. And I think just out of fairness to the residents in there, from the, you know, consistency with what the OMB decided and imposed on the city to further review, and what, let's be honest, my motion still imposes restrictive zoning on a good number of residents that I represent, much to their chagrin. This is not something that I'm all of a sudden bringing something forward to remove designation from people. Residents in this area that were fighting this in 2009 are still being heavily impacted by this decision that I've brought forward through this motion. What it does is it just separates the areas, it separates the Flouellen Special Study Area from the balance. And if residents in those areas, if property owners in those areas are wishing to dispute the wetland boundary, they can do so on their own accord, they can bring in a wetland evaluator, and they can submit their findings to the ministry for further review. And if that's the case, then those findings would get brought to the city, and that would inform any future decisions, whether it's, it wouldn't be the OP, because it's already designated under the OP, but it would be in the follow-up zoning, comprehensive zoning bylaw review. So, those possibilities are still there down the road, essentially giving them the same leeway that we afforded the residents in the Flouellen Special Study Area back in 2009. So, this doesn't preclude anything from happening in the future, it just brings us back to that predictability that we set out in 2009, following the OMB decision.
Okay, thank you councillor Gower, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wanted to just emphasize something really clearly, because I completely understand the confusion. This is a file that goes back 15 years, and it is complicated, all of the steps in the process. Councillor El Shantiri just told me it's actually 20 years. I got an email from a resident this week, who said, "Why isn't the city doing more to protect these wetlands?" I supported councillor Moffett's motion at ARAC, and I only did so because I was convinced, and I still am, that the motion does not diminish in any way the protection of these wetlands. So, this resident wanted me to ensure that our municipality, our city, could better protect these wetlands than the provincially significant wetland designation they already have. There is nothing more we can do as a municipality to enhance what's already a provincially significant wetland. I suppose we could apply to UNESCO for a world natural heritage site or something. But provincially significant wetlands is the highest level of designation that these lands can have, and nothing in councillor Moffett's motion to ARAC or what's being recommended here diminishes in any way the protection, the preservation of these wetlands as a significant natural area. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Great, thank you. So, on the committee recommendation, carried? Dissent by McKenney, Menard, and Kavanaugh. Okay. Disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority, suite à donner des articles ratifiés par les comités envers de pouvoir déléguer, the council received the list of items approved by its committees under delegated authority attached in document one. Received? Motion to adopt reports, motion important adoption of rapport, councillor Luloff, please, seconded by councillor Moffett.
The report from the integrity commissioner entitled "Interim Report to Council on an Inquiry Respecting the Conduct of Councillor Shirelli, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Reports 10 and 11, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 10, Finance and Economic Development Committee and Nominating Committees Joint Report 1, Transportation Committee Report 8, and the report from the city clerk entitled "Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements", and, sorry, "at the city council meeting of January 29, 2020 to be received and adopted as amended."
On the motion, carried and update? Motions of which notice have been previously given, motion dont avait été donné entièrement, moved by councillor Brockington, seconded by councillor Blay. Councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, your worship. My moment to shine here, driveway reinstatements post sewer work this summer. I know, you know, I'm trying to get these victories. So, this summer, Claymore, Signo-Filais Road will be having sewer work, road will be obviously put back, and there are some driveway issues, similar to a motion that council passed pre-Christmas of last year, for very similar work in the Carlington area.
I think there's probably general consensus that this is...
All right.
Something carried? Thank you.
What else can I get done?
That's it.
Since you're in such a receiving mood, thank you.
Next is a motion was given, a notice two weeks ago by councillor Menard, seconded by councillor Meehan, and we now have a... by Councillor Meehan, and we now have a substitute motion by myself, seconded by Councillor Menard. So from a procedural point of view, do we deal with the Watson Menard motion now?
That would be correct, Mr. Mayor.
I believe, I think technically we're going to, this one's before us because it's a replacement motion, so I'll read it out. It's fairly long, but I think it's important that we read it. So moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Menard. Whereas in Ontario, the provincial government has made P3 procurement screening a requirement for partnership funding for projects of $100 million or greater in value to improve value for money as compared to more traditional procurement models such as design bid build, and this was also a requirement for federal funding for the Stage 2 LRT project. And whereas the Stage 2 LRT project, which was approved and deemed appropriate to be procured by PPP Canada as a requirement for federal funding, incorporated a number of third-party review mechanisms for the Stage 2 LRT procurement process included as follows: A lessons learned report from the Stage 1 LRT procurement undertaken by a consultant, an independent fairness commissioner who oversaw the entire Stage 2 procurement process and confirmed compliance with the fairness requirements of the RFQ and RFP process, and further confirmed that the process resulting in the selection of the winning proposal was consistent with the RFQ and RFP, and an independent rail certifier who indicated that the system met the requirements for substantial completion under the project agreement. Whereas when questions were raised about the Stage 2 LRT procurement process, city council also asked the City of Ottawa's Auditor General, a statutory officer that is independent of the city's administration, and reports directly to council to audit this process. Whereas having the full and unfettered access to all procurement documentation with respect to Stage 2 LRT procurement process and all city officials and advisors who oversaw the process, the City of Ottawa's Auditor General and his independent consultant team, Sampson Associates, reported on November 26, 2019, the procurement process was followed and was consistent with the compliant with the Trillium Line RFP, and that the delegated authorities were adhered to by city officials and advisors, but that improvements in the procurement process could be made. And whereas due to the ongoing problems with the Stage 1 LRT and bus operations over the course of the first five months of the service, members of council and the public are continuing to express concerns about the Stage 2 Trillium Line procurement, in particular in light of the technical evaluation scores. And whereas although staff have advised that the winning proponent, TNext or TransitNext, was technically a compliant bid, and the technical parts of the bid that did not meet council's criteria for the project were addressed to the city's satisfaction before the March 6, 2019 council meeting approving the selection of TransitNext and included the executed contract, neither council or the public have seen the documents that support staff's assertions that they have a right to see them now that the procurement is closed. And whereas these documents would not be complete without council, and the public also seeing the legal opinion by NRF dated October 23, 2018, entitled Trillium DPFM RFP Technical Evaluation Bid Evaluation Steering Committee Discretion and Reevaluation, end quote. And whereas the city is currently completing the environmental assessment, preliminary engineering and costing on Stage 3 LRT, once completed, will extend LRT to the fast-growing communities of Barhaven, Kanata, and Stittsville. It is expected that the city will have a proposal ready for consideration by the province of Ontario and the Government of Canada by the end of 2020. And whereas given the provincial funding for Stage 3 is anticipated to require the use of a P3 approach, and city council's decision on Stage 3 procurement process should be informed by the lessons learned in Stage 1 and Stage 2 of LRT, starting with the improvements recommended by the city's auditor general and augmented by a third-party review. Therefore be it resolved that city council approve the following in substitution for the motion from Councillors Menard and Meehan. One, the council direct the city manager to release Stage 2 Light Rail Transit Trillium Line project procurement documents, including the technical compliance scores, the technical evaluations, and the specific bid amendments made to the contract to ensure the council's criteria for the project are going to be met to city council and the public as soon as possible in advance of the March 3 FedCo meeting. And two, that the city council waive its solicitor-client privilege with respect to the October 23, 2018 legal opinion by Norton Rose Fulbright entitled, quote, "Trillium DPFM RFP Technical Evaluation Bid Evaluation Steering Committee Discretion and Reevaluation." So it can be included for the release with the above noted procurement documents. And three, that an independent consultant be engaged to undertake a lessons learned exercise in the Stage 2 LRT project procurement process, building on the recommendation in the auditor general's project procurement, as well as options to strengthen any of the following key public procurement principles: transparency, integrity, value for money, openness, fairness, competition, accountability, such that the work is completed in time for the Stage 3 procurement process. And four, that the scope of work and recommended consultant for the lessons learned exercise be brought to FedCo and full council for their approval by the end of Q2 2020, with the intention that the consultants' reports be presented to committee and council by November 2020. And five, that city council direct staff to incorporate a review of the city's public-private partnership policy in addition to the city's purchasing bylaw and delegation of authority bylaw as part of the midterm governance review process, which includes consultations with every member of council. So colleagues, I'd like to offer some comments. That's a lot of material, but I thought it was important that we read it into the record and take a few moments. And I think all members would agree, I believe there's a legitimate public interest in clarifying the very complex details that inform the basis for the city's Stage 2 procurement process, which is our largest procurement process in the history of our city. And that's why I'm asking colleagues to vote today in support of the release of the legal opinion on the city's Stage 2 procurement. And also to vote today to direct the city manager to release Stage 2 Trillium Line project procurement documents, including the technical compliance scores. This includes the specific bid amendments made to the contract to ensure council's criteria for the project are going to be met.
I'd like to have unanimous support of the council to have these documents published before the next FedCo meeting on March 3.
...as the city continues its work to advance Stage 3 of LRT. My substitute motion, seconded by Councillor Menard, also includes the hiring of an independent consultant chosen by and reporting to council to provide recommendations to council by November 2020. This would allow council to immediately mandate work to consider any improvements we can make to consider procurement bylaws, but also to focus on the key procurement principles of transparency, integrity, value for money, openness, fairness, competition, and accountability. And lastly, I'm recommending that Councillor Menard's suggestion and Councillor Meehan's suggestion that we review the city's P3 policy, we refer to the midterm governance exercise when large-scale policy reviews of this nature actually are scheduled to take place. So in closing, I ask for your support of the timely and complete release of all the documentation pertaining to the Stage 2 procurement, so that we can continue to work together to restore public trust in the largest and most transformative transit decision in our city's history. I want to also thank Councillor Menard and Meehan for collaborating with the substitute motion with my office, and also Councillor Gower, who was the original secondar of the motion, has been replaced by Councillor Menard, as well as my office staff and other members of council who brought forward very good suggestions to improve the motion that I had, as well as Councillor Menard. I believe this is an important time for council to move forward with this, and I ask Councillor, I think maybe Councillor Menard, do you want to speak before we go to other speakers as the secondar of the motion? Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. You know, I've had a chance to review this motion fairly recently, and I think there's some important elements here. It's going further than what we were originally requesting on a number of elements, which we need to see. And so I was happy to see that we're going to be releasing the opinion of the legal firm that was hired. I'm happy to see that there's going to be a full independent review of this. Some of timelines, I wish for better, but it is a good motion to get some accountability around the table. We've talked a lot about the level of delegated authority that was handed over previously. I think that was surprising to some people at the time. We talked about going outside Infrastructure Ontario, our purchasing bylaw, our delegated authority bylaw using the P3 policy. This is going to get some answers for that. I think we talked about to what extent do we want future RFPs and projects of significant public interest to enable the city to allow for a proponent not meeting the minimum technical score to proceed to the financial evaluation without coming back to council, that we're fully informed of those sorts of things before that takes place, and that when questions are asked by Councillor Leep or other questions asked at this table, we get the answers that are appropriate then. We need to make sure that RFPs are made public, as the auditor general has said. He was saying, "Consider that." We're saying, "No, we're going to do that work now. RFPs are going to be made public, blacked out where necessary in terms of redaction." You know, in terms of the consideration afforded in our P3 policy, and when a legal firm has done significant work for one of the proponents, and then is appointed to our bid evaluation steering committee, those answers should come as part of this review. So I'm happy to support it. I appreciate the mayor and the rest of council moving in this direction, the public's demanding accountability on this now, and this gets us closer to that. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, on the motion. So also happy to see this in front of us today. I will be supporting it. I do agree that it goes further than the original motion, and it is important that we unanimously, I hope, take the position that we need answers and we need a full accounting of what's happened. A lot of discussion over the last week or so, you know, words like trust, you know, broken trust, in the public domain is not something as a council that we should ever take lightly, and I hope that this will help to reestablish that with our public, with the people who count on us to ask the right questions and get the answers that we need to make decisions in their best interest. I just have a couple of questions. Would this cover, so we had a technical evaluation team that made certain scores and obviously had some comment on what those scores were, and then the bid evaluation steering committee who sent it back twice. Would this include those specific comments and how they were addressed? Because I believe in one scenario, we were told that the technical evaluation team had agreed entirely that, you know, to move forward after being spoken to by the bid evaluation steering committee. So I just want to make sure that we get all of that information in this independent review. Would that be included in that?
Mr. White or Mr. Katalakis?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that the first, therefore be it resolved, number one, would address that, and I believe that the number three would also be the other piece that would address those things. We plan to release everything, so everything will be in the public domain, so you'll be able to see it all.
Okay, thank you for that. And there was one other question that had been raised at the time about the potential or what could be seen as a conflict of interest with Norton Rose Fulbright, in that they were, as a legal firm, had also represented and continues to represent S&amp;C Lavalas. So would the independent review include how that conflict of interest, potential, conflict of interest was handled at the time that the city brought them on as the legal firm?
Mr. White?
Mr. Mayor, provided that that process is set out in all of that procurement documentation, I would understand that that would be part of what is to be produced.
But if it's not part of the procurement, are we going to ever understand how that potential conflict of interest was handled?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So it will be part of the review? We will get that as part of the review?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kavanaugh, please, on the motion.
Thank you. I was going to support the original motion, and I appreciate the work that was done on coming to this compromise, but this is something that is as big as our entire city. This is something that we are talking about, the entire future of our city. And I appreciate the fact that an arrangement was come to, but it came to at the last minute, and we're being presented with it now. And I think just out of respect for the fact of the importance of this subject, that this should be done ahead of time, with councillors seeing these motions ahead of time. But I appreciate the work that was done, but I ask that we be given notice ahead of time when there's changes, because I appreciate you made a deal, you know, in a back room, and you came back and came to a conclusion, but the rest of council was not part of it, and we're only seeing it now. And despite the support, it's still just plain manners to give us some notice ahead of time, and I think that that we should do from now on. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. Just to clarify, though, that we are going to release them before the FedCo meeting, which is in about, I think, 10 days or so. So there is lots of advance notice to get that information online in that period for the public. Yeah, I agree. Okay, yeah, thank you. Councillor Meehan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to urge my council colleagues to support this motion. It does, in fact, go deeper than what Councillor Menard and I had written up, but it's necessary, and I applaud the mayor and his staff and some of my council colleagues here for proposing this today. And yes, it could have been done earlier, but the fact of the matter is, it's an important motion, and it's going to do a lot to, I think, give people in the city a lot more faith in what we're doing. We're talking about the largest infrastructure project that the city has ever undertaken, and quite frankly, the people around this council table, it was all new to everyone. And I really feel that there were things that were done that were unnecessarily secretive and did not give us much transparency. And if we can get to the bottom of what happened and have a clear picture of how we're going to go forward, because it's clear that we will see more P3 projects in the future, then we have to do that. We do not want to see as a council that's fractured. We want to go forward as a unit with full confidence that what we're getting are fulsome answers and clarity, so that we can answer our constituents, because that's what they're asking of us. We're the ones who are accountable. We should not be cut out of decisions because we have faith in staff. That's unrealistic, it's not acceptable. So I believe what we're going to vote on here today is going to give us more trust that what we're going to be hearing from our staff, and we respect our staff, we do, we know you're the best out there, but we want to be able to trust the answers and tell our constituents why we have done a certain thing. And I think this motion today takes us a great leap forward in that. So I would urge you to vote in favor of this motion, and let's turn a new page on this council. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Councillor Meehan. Councillor Aguil, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As important as this motion is, and it's extremely important, I think just as important is the spirit of cooperation and collaboration that brought us to this point. As a former mediator, it warms my heart, quite seriously it does, to see this. And I sincerely hope that this is just the tip of the iceberg about how we're going to proceed for the balance of this term, because I think this is a very healthy turn we've made, and if we can stay together on the issues that are important to the residents of this city in a collaborative and cooperative way, as we've seen this morning, I want to thank all the parties that, you know, whether the deal was reached this morning, last night, or whenever it was, I want to thank everybody who was part of that and made it happen, and were willing to talk and concede positions and wording and everything else to get to this point. So I think this is, it's more important than the issue we're dealing with today. It's part of a much bigger issue that we've been dealing with for the first year of council, and I think this is a fabulous step forward, and I think without question, we should all support it.
Thank you, Councillor Aguil. Councillor Gower, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to remember to never speak after Councillor Aguil, because he tends to take the words out of my mouth sometimes, but thank you for that. What I wanted to just, an observation is, I hope that with this motion, we can shift our approach a little bit collectively as a council. I've found over the past few months, whenever there is an issue with our transit system, we kind of all go madly off in different directions. We're all trying to do the right thing, we're all trying to help, but we try to blame this or blame that. It's P3, it's procurement, it's transparency, it's secrecy, it's this person's fault, it's that's person's fault. We need to come together. We need to be leaders, we need to play our oversight role as a council, as we should be. Too often, we're looking at hindsight, and there's a part of the process where we do need to investigate and learn lessons and do better next time. I think this motion helps us get to that place. And what I want to encourage or ask my colleagues here is that we let this process play out, we let the auditor general's process play out in the investigation that he's doing, and give our transit staff the support and the time to fix the issues that are here. So that's what we need to be focused on now, giving our transit team the support they need to fix these very serious and difficult issues we're experiencing, and then with the there be a point where we can make our decisions as to what we've learned in the past and how we can do better in the future? And I think that's the way, the only way, really, that we can start to rebuild that confidence and trust that we need, because we need a solid transit system in this city as we continue to grow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, your worship. And certainly, I don't think there's anyone around the table who's going to vote against this. I think this is a very sound motion, and all the comments that have been stated thus far, but all the hands that went into this, I want to echo my appreciation. I think it's, as part of good oversight and governance, there should be an automatic, not a postmortem, but a review. When you've gone through a major process, there should be an automatic process where you review how that worked out, and whether staff look to us to try and tease out some of the main things that we've experienced or heard from a community where these motions should come forward, or whether we direct staff and say, after major processes, you know, after LRT Phase 1 opens, that there to be an automatic review. And I think that's something we need to give a little more thought to, because I don't think this particular motion goes far enough. I'm certainly not going to amend it. But one thing I want to suggest is, we need to consider the role and extent of delegated authority. That's another one as well. We can't forget that council gave our staff a lot of authority here. And we've been critical of the fact that they've made some decisions that we've allowed them to do. So, for future stages of LRT, or even future major projects in the city where we delegate that authority to staff, that is an issue for this council. That could be one thing that we review and reflect on as well. I don't have an issue with delegated authority. I don't want to clog the business of this corporation up by having it always come back to council. But if council wants to provide oversight throughout a process where delegated authority has been given, then we can integrate that into the direction or motions that we pass. Again, that's not germane to today, but I just want to say, there are other things that concern me that have come up through this process, and the delegated authority portion is one of them. So, again, to the hands that have crafted the motion that we see before us today, absolutely, our public would like to see this review. It is absolutely should be an automatic phase after we go through a major process like LRT, and I will be supporting this today. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Yays and nays? Okay, it's been called. Yays and nays on the Watson Menard motion?
Counselor Kavanaugh?
Yea.
Counselor Deans?
Yes.
Counselor Dudas?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Egli?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli?
Counselor Moffett?
Counselor Moffett?
Yes.
Counselor Hubley?
Yes.
Conseil Cloutier?
Oui.
Counselor Gower?
Oui.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Suds?
Yes.
Counselor Tierney?
Yes.
Counselor Drews?
Yes.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Counselor Meehan?
Yes.
Counselor Luloff?
Absolument.
Conseil Blay?
Oui.
Counselor Brockington?
Yes.
Counselor Leeper?
Yes.
Counselor Menard?
Yes.
Counselor McKenney?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Oui.
Twenty-two yays.
See? Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedures. Motion exige on the suspension of the procedure, come of Counselor Hubley, signed by Counselor Cloutier with respect to OC Transport Fries on suspension. Okay, Counselor Hubley, if you want to introduce the motion, starting at the whereas's.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Whereas OC Transport Fares are scheduled to increase on April 1, 2020, in accordance with the 2020 budget approved by council on December 11, 2019. And whereas it would be beneficial for city staff to receive council's direction with respect to the continuation of the fare freeze as soon as possible, as arrangements need to be made to confirm fare prices before the April 2020 monthly passes go on sale. Therefore, be it resolved that the rules of procedure be suspended to permit the introduction of the following motion. Whereas council on December 11, 2019 approved an overall 2.5% base increase to the OC Transport Fares as part of the Transit Commission portion of the 2020 budget. And whereas, in recognition of the challenges experienced by OC Transport customers, since the launch of the Old Train Confederation Line, Transit Commission and Council approved the effective date for the recommended 2020 fare increase be delayed to April 1, 2020. And we directed the General Manager of Transportation Services to bring forward recommendations to the Transit Commission and Council no later than February 2020 on how a fare freeze beyond March 2020 could be funded in the event that the LRT service to transit passengers does not improve to the city's satisfaction. And whereas, while progress is being made towards resolving the operational issues, service has not yet improved to the level that meets the city's satisfaction, as transit customers continue to experience challenging and uncertain commutes as a result of ongoing issues and service disruptions. And whereas, staff have estimated the net cost of continuing the fare freeze at $340,000 per month in reduced fare revenue. And whereas, the current fare freeze is being funded through the financial and performance provisions in the project agreement with the Rideau Transit Group, RTG, and the Rideau Transit Maintenance, RTM. And whereas, in June 2019, following the approval of the 2019 budget, council subsequently approved the motion delegating authority to the city manager to determine the effective date of the 2019 fare changes. Therefore, be it resolved that council delegate authority to the city manager in consultation with the General Manager of Transportation Services Department to determine the effective date of the 2020 fare changes, once services on Old Train Line 1 has improved to the city's satisfaction, in accordance with the satisfactory service levels prescribed in the project agreement with RTG. And be it further resolved that in accordance with the delegation of powers policy, which includes the principle that every delegation of power or duty of council shall be accompanied by a corresponding accountability and transparency mechanism, that the exercise of this delegated authority be reported to the members of the Transit Commission and Council by way of a memorandum, such as the fare changes would come into effect on the first day of the month, no less than one month, following the issuance of the said memorandum. And finally, be it further resolved that council approve that the cost of the fare freeze continued to be funded through the anticipated funds from the financial and performance provisions in the project agreement with the Rideau Transit Group, RTG, and Rideau Transit Maintenance, RTM. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gower on the motion, please.
Yes, I have a, I guess, a couple of questions and a comment. The first question would be, using the, funding this through the anticipated funds from the financial and performance provisions. I want to make sure I'm understanding the accounting for that money. We're not paying Rideau Transit Management, Rideau Transit Group, this money. Is that sitting in a reserve fund? I guess I'm looking for advice on how we should be thinking about this. Is this a big pot of money that's going to keep accumulating that transit, we can use for transit, can we use elsewhere? How should we be thinking about that collection of money, or that money saved?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that question. Currently, the budget for this is sitting in the transit budget. And what we will be doing is just making accounting entries in terms of any deductions that we will make, or any potential future payments against that.
From a legal point of view, though, are we free to use that any way we want, once it hasn't been paid in a previous month? Is that just ours to, we have total discretion? Or is there any legal risk if we start using it one way or another?
Well, the several counselors have asked me that question, Mr. Mayor, about the deductions that we've held back, that we're now using to fund other things. And there's nothing in the project agreement that requires us to pay that money back in the future. There are actual deductions withheld that we keep. That doesn't preclude RTG from seeking legal means or arbitration through the PA to try and get that money back at some point in the future. But they don't automatically get it back because they change their performance. Once they miss a month, then we make those calculations. We keep that money.
Okay. My comment would be, first of all, I support the motion. I support the fare freeze. I think in this case, it's the right thing to do. My concern, or my comment, I guess, is, you know, if we do have millions of dollars that we're not paying to RTM, it's, I guess, a question on where we want to focus that money to really make a difference to residents. Is a fare freeze, which may save, you know, a few pennies per ride, it's certainly beneficial and a good gesture to riders, but would that money be better spent to invest in more buses, more operators, expanded service, more bus shelters, and things like that? I just, I think we should be careful before we, well, we should just be careful about the choices we're making. If we have money to spend, how can we actually best serve our riders? I do support this fare freeze, though. The other question I had was, I know that if we do not raise fares at any point in 2020, there are some serious implications to the long-range financial plan. Does anything in this motion lock us into a situation where if service issues continue to the end of 2020, that we could be putting that long-range plan in jeopardy?
Mr. Mayor, you would at least need to make one fare increase to get that base reestablished. And the treasurer can explain that if you don't get that increase in this year, it has a compounding effect over your transit affordability plan in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So, our hope is that the service is stabilized. But worst-case scenario, if it's not stabilized, you don't get one fare increase in by the end of the year, perhaps the treasurer can just build on that for you.
Mr. Mayor, and to my colleague, Mr. Manconi, he is correct. If you do not make that change to the base, it is a compounding effect for future budgets. The other option that you do have is looking at implementing a fare increase that could be potentially double in the following year, which would negate that. But if there's no fare increase and it carries forward, I believe the impact is to the tune of $300 million.
Okay. I think this is really important, to set expectations for our residents, that we may have, I really hope that we'll have these issues resolved. But worst case, we may end up with a situation that could be politically and very difficult and difficult communications-wise, if we're not upfront and making sure people have that expectation. Not raising fares at all this year could cost tens, or perhaps hundreds, of millions of dollars over the next few decades. And I think that's a pretty significant caution we need to have out there to our residents and riders. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well said. Thank you. Counselor Menard, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for the motion. I also wanted to echo the thanks for Commissioner Sarah Wright Gilbert, who had been pushing this and was going to bring a motion similar to this at next Transit Commission meeting. So, appreciate the mover and Ms. Wright Gilbert. I do want to pick up on Counselor Gower's remarks, because if we're freezing a fare, it is only good if you freeze it for the year. Otherwise, it's just a very small reprieve for folks, because what usually happens is, when we freeze a fare for three months, it goes up after that three months, and then it goes up in the budget again. So, it's not like we're behind. When the budget comes around, we'll have increased fares substantially for folks, once and then twice in the budget. And it maintains that sort of yearly increase of 2.5%. The reason I say is, it'd be nice if we didn't have that double increase. It'd be nice that we recognize how high our fares are in Ottawa. We have very high fares here. We've got the service we've got, and we have very high fares. So, ideally, I'd love to see a memorandum come back that says, look at, the next increase, if there has to be one, is at the budget. We're not going to do it before then, because then it's a double increase, as Counselor Gower was sort of alluding to. I understand the concern on the long-range financial plan, but we also have to understand that fares have gone up exponentially in the last 10 years. We've gone up a lot in the last 10 years, in terms of fares. So, I believe the number is almost 80%. So, we have to consider that in all of this as well. I'll support the motion. Appreciate it coming forward, but I want to make sure to recognize those points as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Brockington on the motion, please.
Thank you again, your worship. And I thank colleagues for their comments as well, and the recognition for Commissioner Wright Gilbert, certainly giving notice that this was coming to Transit Commission, where this debate should be, have had first and foremost. Just so I can understand the wording of the motion, it doesn't put a limit on the fare freeze. And I just want staff to confirm that, that this is open-ended, that we are giving the authority today to freeze fares past March 31, and that the expectation is when service stabilizes, we are giving you the power to basically end the freeze, give us notice, one month's notice. But we're going to give you that power. Can you just confirm that? If we continue to have service challenges that require either no payment to RTM or partial payment to RTM, that this could be indefinite?
Mr. Mayor, the motion specifically says that it has to be in compliance with the levels prescribed in the project agreement. So, we have to be getting what you've bought for in the P3. And once they reach that point, then we have that authority to come back to you.
So, to Counselor Gower's point, we are going to, even though we're going to give staff this authority today, we have to come back at some point in 2020 to have at least the financial discussion about what the financial impacts could be. Because if service interruptions continue, staff have the authority to continue to freeze fares. But we've just heard, we have to make, at least have another conversation before 2020 ends about whether or not we want to continue that. So, I just want to flag that that is a concern. Staff, can you again confirm, the maintenance payment was made in September 2019, but no payment whatsoever in October, November, December 2019, or January 2020? Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, and thank you for the opportunity, Counselor. Look, I want to say a few words on that. First, in my 31 years, I've always been very proud of the fact that I've provided councils, that I've worked with timely and accurate information. And as you know, you've heard my quotes earlier this week, I clearly remember talking to reporters during a scrum about the mandatory September payment. We thought we had fully-informed counsel, but obviously, we did not. And for that, I sincerely apologize. Make no mistake about it, there's no deceit, there's no lies. That's not who I am, that's not who my team is. We're all human, and we make mistakes. I apologize. In terms of payments, we made the September payment. We've made a payment on the strap hangers, and all the other payments in accordance with the direction from the city manager, we have withheld. Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Manconi, for that information. The reason why I ask about the withholding of payments is, I need to wrap my head around whether those payments are being withheld simply because we have that authority via the contract, or whether there's any onus on the city or OC Transport to prove that we have, as a result of service irregularities, we've had to incur additional costs. We've put more buses on the line, more staffing, et cetera.
Right, Counselor, just in fairness, we're dealing with a fare freeze, and we're going way off topic. So, if you can bring it back to the fare freeze, otherwise, we'll have to go on to some other...
What I'm trying to understand is, of the monies that are being withheld every month, we know the actual amount that the fare freeze is costing us. I think it's about $800,000. And so, there are other monies that are being withheld, because there are other costs to the city. That's the only reason I was asking that, was to get some context or background first. But the global point that this council has to remember is, going back to Counselor Gower, that if service irregularities happen, and we give the authority today to freeze those fares, we have to come back. And I'm asking staff, please come back to us, because right now, there's no comeback provision in this motion. God forbid that we have service irregularities that happen, you know, for months further. Obviously, everyone's working towards fixing those issues, and we get full service as soon as possible. But from a financial point of view, we need to come back as a council. If staff haven't indicated that that fare freeze will end because service has sustained and continues to provide good service, then there has to be something that triggers that conversation again. So, what's before us today? I will certainly support, Mr. Mayor. I would like to get some more information about costs later. I'll follow up to save council some time. But certainly, from the I'll follow up to save council some time, but certainly, from the perspective of the transit rider, who has been significantly impacted over the past few months, a fare freeze, extending the fare freeze is the right thing to do.
Yeah, just to be clear, staff, in the motion of Counselor Hubley, it says that the exercise is delegated to be reported to members of Transit Commission and Council. The reason we have this is because unfortunately, our Transit Commission meetings and our council meetings don't line up with the performance of the LRT, and we need the flexibility, because you have to change the Presto system and the printing of passes and so on well in advance. So, it gives us more flexibility to be nimble, to determine if we're not satisfied with the level of performance by RTG, then we're not going to raise the fares of our passengers, but it gives that flexibility for us to be nimble based on the requirement, technical requirements of changing the computer system and the pass system and so on. So, thank you for your input. Counselor Fleury, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too will be supporting the motion, but I would, I would add a little element of caution for all of us. We can't create a system where if the train's not performing, it's one thing, and we freeze fares, yet if buses aren't performing, we're not acting. So, I've pulled, because I've kept track of all the bus data cancellation over the last year, and our toughest by far in terms of rides, and I'd love to see what that means in terms of impact, was Jan, February, January 2019, so just one, a year from today, we had 1,800 cancellation in one month. The following month in February, we had 2,000. So, I'm fine today to look at freezing fares for performance, but we can't split performance. If we're having that conversation on trains, we're going to have to start looking at what that means for buses. So, I'm glad to support it today, but I'm also putting everyone on heads-up. We're not creating a dual system where we're favoring a user versus another types of user in the system. So, right now, when I look month after month, we're doing much better than where we were last year in terms of bus cancellations, but for us, you can't just come, we can't just come here on a train-only environment on a freeze. We have to be consistent in saying, we want good, reliable service, as Mr. Manconi and the entire team wants, but when we're not there, we're looking at freezes. It can impact trains, it should also impact buses, so that our customer can, can, can be treated equally along that. So, I'm glad to support the motion, but I would caution us on favoring a type of rider versus another.
I think in fairness, though, Counselor, a lot of the cancellations we've seen the last couple of weeks were because we put on that extra service because of the unreliability of the train system. We had to take that off regular route service, and that will come back up. The other thing I forgot to mention, thank you, Mr. Manconi, for your comments. I know, I see, I've seen you perform, you're a man of great integrity. I would hope that those members of council who called Mr. Manconi and our staff a liar would take an opportunity to apologize, ideally publicly or privately, for casting dispersions on their integrity. So, I thank you for your comment and your explanation. Counselor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you very much. I appreciate some of the comments of my colleagues. I think we need to sort of make it clear for the public in terms of what this looks like. You're talking in the motion about satisfaction with performance, and so does that mean that if we have a couple of months of, you know, 13 trains or whatever per day, then we're good, and then we can, we can move on? What does it look like? What does it look like to the public?
To, to make it real for the public, the standard is very, very high. If they miss the capacity during the morning or afternoon rush hour, that, they're not meeting the points that they needed to get through. And the memo that the city manager and I and the team are putting out will explain that payment mechanism. They're very, very high standards. So, if they have any slippage during morning and afternoon rush hour, you see the effects of that, whether they're short a train or miss a trip and so forth. So, it's a tough threshold to get through. So, in terms of explaining it best, it's consistent, rush hour period service, and then throughout the day consistently, stations opened and so forth, all the equipment working. It's a high standard.
Thank you. For how long? It's, if you sort of have it go for a month solid or whatever, I think that people want to sort of visualize that, okay, that means that things are going well, and we're moving on.
It has to be consistent, and, you know, you're seeing, there's a reason I didn't pull those supplementary buses off the rail, even last week, when we had five days straight of really good service. We want to see a good, consistent, long pattern, and the work we're doing with the independent consultant that's in there, with JBA, they're a clear line of sight for us in terms of consistent service. So, we want to see week after week of consistent service, and, and that they're, they have the foresight to sustain that. It's not just, it's getting done, but it's a sustainment of that service.
And in terms of the heads-up on, all right, we're going along quite well, the service is going well, what is the timeline in terms of, okay, that means we can raise the fares? Is that a couple of months away? What is, what is the approximate time period?
Well, I think there's a couple of opportunities. We have the monthly update to Transit Commission, we can do, we've got the regular messaging that I've been giving you, and, you know, we're hearing the message loud and clear that it's not just a quick message out, so I think there's multiple opportunities to inform you in terms of what it looks like. The monthly update to Transit Commission will continue to be based on what you've seen in the past, how the system is performing and so forth.
And if something happens in that time period, is it back to the drawing board? For example, a major upset?
Like we experienced this weekend, yes. They heard it loud and clear from us, that they had five great days, morning and afternoon rush hours last week, and they blew it on the weekend and on, and on Monday morning.
Thank you. I appreciate my colleague mentioning about the bus service because of the domino effect. I think that's what we're feeling. Every time those buses are missing from the bus service, it's because the train has, has got issues, and we're borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, as it were. So, it definitely has an effect overall. So, I appreciate that you're talking about service. When you talk about service, I see it as the whole picture in, in terms of that. So, I think we just want to see for the public what the triggers are, what it looks like. I think people really need the information of, you know, is a faulty door still going to be a problem? Does that mean you're going to hold back? What does it look like in terms of the, the thing that triggers the, the process to say, no, we can't, we can't do, we can't consider this good service?
Again, Counselor, it's, it's the trips and the volume that you're buying through this, this contract, that they're consistent, reliable, and, and on time, the headways and so forth. You now know through all my updates, you see when there's less vehicles, what that does, you see when there's, you know, like yesterday, people were wondering, why did a five-minute door hold cause a 15-to-20-minute delay throughout the system? It was twofold. They were short one vehicle, they had to pull it, and then there's also the adjustment period. So, consistent service gives you that four, four-and-a-half-minute headway, and again, last week, when we had 13 trains running end-to-end on weekends, or weekdays, we weren't hearing any complaints or any major complaints. The other thing, too, that we're working on is we're asking for that additional vehicle, so we can launch a 14th vehicle, so that's all part of it.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for your apology. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Kavanaugh. Counselor Hubley, you're going to wrap up, so we'll put you at the bottom of the list. Okay, Counselor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be brief. I mean, I look at the motion here, and I think that we've gone far adrift from what the motion is about that Counselor Hubley has put forward, and I'm glad to see the motion, and I would be surprised if people in this city are not, well, especially that our transit supporters wouldn't be happy about it, too. I think that it speaks to the conviction that the staff have in, in doing better, and I know that we've seen that. What I, what I object to today is you, Mr. Manconi, feeling that you had to apologize to this council. You did not have to apologize to this council. I hate it, and it has happened in the past, not often, where councils of the past or today have put our staff in a position where somebody had to take it. Do we think for one minute that he's not working full out with his staff every single day to make this better for the people of this city? Because if you don't, you go back to the same question of wherever Mr. Katalakis is, and you say, do we sustain the city manager? Because you know what? He also has confidence in Mr. Manconi. I don't believe for a minute that you deserve to say that. I could tell by your voice, somebody who has known you for 30 freaking years and seen how hard you've worked for every single person that I have ever represented, and certainly people in this city. I know that for a fact, John Manconi. I also know, because I think I can, you know, remember back, I have a great memory, when they released the train to us, we had a duty to pay, make a payment. They had not failed at that point, people. Ever since there was a problem, they have had the money deducted. They have not seen more money. But it was not an error, that was part of the deal. And anybody who thinks not, go back and read the damn deal. What I care about is the fact that we've got people who are so challenged by trying to just live their life in the city with this system, that we need to make it better. I care very much about the people that I represent and across the city, they're having such hardship, and I applaud the people that are every day giving us hints on how to do a bit better. You know, I have one of my daughters that walked from Rita Center to Tunnies.
Sorry, a point of order?
I thought we were just speaking on freeze. I thought that was the rule.
Well, you know, that would be fine, Counselor McKenney, if everybody else had just spoken on that. They did not.
Counselor.
They did not.
Counselor, count, sorry. Counselor Harder, if you can go back to the motion and/or wrap up, please.
And which is what really I've been doing. I said, right off the bat, that what the conversation has been is not about the motion, but we, I think that nobody in this city is not going to support the motion, and I would hope that everybody on council is going to, too. But in the interim, I know that they're going to do everything they can to make sure that we don't have to continue, that our people don't have to be put in these circumstances. I have that confidence, and I suggest that all of you do, too. It makes you better to think otherwise, well, so be it for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cloutier, Conseil Cloutier, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, Monsieur Mayor. And with respect to the fare freeze, just a couple of comments, and I'm seconding the motion, I absolutely support it. We're talking about the fare freeze and the impact of the fare freeze, and that, I think that's on the table. Counselor Menard spoke about the, whether there would be two, two fare increases later, and, and he referred to Counselor, Commissioner Wright Gilbert's proposed motion that, that would have come to, to transit. And even that motion in the whereas's recognizes that the fare freeze is because of the level of service and, and, and the potential to recover that money from RTG. And so, my questions and my comments are in that. As we've heard in the past, there is no magic to, to, to how, how we are paying for, for the transit service. It is, it is user fees, it is fares, it is taxes, and, or it is service, it is reduced service. What we've heard from our riders is that they want service, and so, there is a cost to that service. Part of that, as per council policy, and as per the long-range financial plan, is through a combination of taxes and fares. There, there is no other, there is no other way to pay for that. And in that, with, with this, with this motion, Mr. Manconi, or perhaps the city solicitor who can answer this, with respect to the project agreement, we are, we are, we have made a calculation. Is there a window for RTG, RTM to legally challenge that, that calculation? What is that window? And what, to, to challenge our interpretation or the calculations that we have made with respect to the project agreement that we're using to fund this fare freeze?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to get clarification so that we are accurate with what we tell you. It's, it's, the complication of it, of course, is that once the, our lawyers have advised us, once the service actually meets the performance specifications and the points applied to it, we can't hold the money back. But once we've held the money back, they can at any time use the dispute resolution process in the PA to challenge the money that we've deducted from their invoices, and there's a process in the PA for them to, to utilize to eventually, which would eventually, and there's like, it's almost like a collective bargaining process or a grievance process, where there's multiple steps, where eventually, they would go to either arbitration or, or the courts to get their money back.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And so, we have a reasonable level of assurance that we are, based on our legal advice, that we are within the rights in our project agreement, within the contract, but as in any other, as in any contractor agreement, there, there are, there are interpretations and there are calculations. And so, I just want to make that point. I absolutely support the fare freeze. I want service to increase. That requires taxes, user fees, and, and the combination of the service that we provide. And so, I just want to, to caution my, my council colleagues that fare freezes that go on forever will do nothing, nothing to improve service, and that is, that is our primary objective. Thank you.
Great, merci, conseil. Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion before Counselor Hubley wraps up? No? Okay, Counselor Hubley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify a few pieces of some of the comments that were said here. Mr. Manconi, could you please give, the mayor alluded to some of the work that you need to do, which is why it's important to get that motion approved at council today. Can you give the council some of the, the things that need to be done and that are time-sensitive?
So, when you tap your Presto card, there's a whole back office that processes your card and so forth. There's deadlines that are instituted by MetroLinks in terms of getting the programming in, so the fare schedules get loaded up into this back office system, all the advertising, the communication to customers, changes of signs, maps, and so forth. And then that all flows through into the fare gates, the card readers on the, the buses, and so forth. So, there's a back office process that is complicated and needs to be done in a structured fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Manconi. So, for my fellow colleagues, this is why it's here today, and because we had done the, the path, if you will, that if a motion was done at the commission, it would have to rise to the next council, which then put us into March and really squeezed out Mr. Manconi's staff's chance to implement the, the additional freeze. The other parts, there was, there was reference to the Citizen Commissioner's motion. There, there's some differences between what we're doing here today to what was proposed in that initial motion, one of which is, there was a proposal there for a month of free transit to be given to our riders. Mr. Manconi, we talked at the Transit Commission previously to, to that motion being suggested about what happens across North America when LRT systems implement free transit, especially over a period of time as much, as much as a month, the likelihood that the system will crash. Is that correct?
Generally speaking, if you've got a built-up ridership like yours, you will be inundated because you'll have your core riders that expect that service, and then you'll have people that will be wanting to use the system. So, we would have concerns supporting that, and we've had lots of feedback in that regard.
Thank you. And the other difference, I believe the proposed motion talked about a freeze to August. Either legal or the treasurer, both, may want to comment on our ability to say today that we will freeze to August, given the, the possibility that March and April may be working really well, because at some point... be working really well, because at some point, the hope is that they get the, the issues that are coming up addressed and corrected quickly. So, I believe the concern of staff was, if we did a freeze all the way to August now, the likelihood that we could honestly have RTM, RTG pay for that would be diminished by the good service. Is that correct?
The independent legal advice we were giving is, if the system is up and running and performing to what's in this motion, the reference to the project agreement, you would, you would be up a huge battle against getting that money from RTM or claiming it against their withheld payments. And, you know, to be candid, they're going to challenge everything here. They're already challenging October, November, I can tell you that right now. They're in the business of making money. And they've got an army of lawyers, and they challenge everything. So if you get into a situation where you put a fixed start date, and that service is meeting and conforming to the project agreement, our legal advisor has said, good luck with that.
Okay, thank you. And perhaps you could give us, councillor Fleury mentioned about doing something for the bus riders. I actually agree with the mayor, and right from the start, has been pushing for investment in the bus system, which is why we've got a bunch of new buses in there, more coming on order. And to me, that's the way we're improving the service for our bus riders. But just to follow through on what councillor Fleury was suggesting, obviously RTM would not be covering the cost of free transit for a month for the buses. So what are the options there? Would it not be, you'd have to have an offset out of the budget?
Well, first off, the fair freeze is multimodal, so this is going to benefit everybody across the entire system. Bus service has improved dramatically when the system is running the way it's supposed to. A reminder, you have 20 buses that we are charging back to RTM on standby. If they got their rail service running the way it was supposed to be, those 20 buses could get redeployed, and we bring your service up even higher. You've invested 7.6 million in your budget that's approved, that's what's caused the significant increase in performance. And conversely, when they got down to eight cars two weeks ago, we had to pull from your roots, and you saw the drop. So, the fair freeze affects everyone, it's across the board. If they get the rail service back up, we've got those 20 extra buses we can deploy, and you added 40 to your base, which we're, we're charging back through all this, and then we'll come back to you with the long-range affordability plan on capital for that. So it's all integrated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manconi. So, Mr. Mayor and my colleagues, the reason we put this motion together the way it is, we're obviously, I think everybody around this table is hoping that the rest of this month and every month going forward, the service will be much better and consistent and reliable than what it has been. So we're all hopeful that this freeze does not need to be extended any further. But by doing it the way we're doing it today, giving the authority to the city manager and, and Mr. Manconi to extend this freeze, if RTM does not get this train working properly, we will be able to continue out those freezes without having to go through this all the time at council. Councilors will be able to come every month to the Transit Commission and talk about the actual issues, the service issues, if they continue and so on. We're not taking away that discussion, it's just so that Mr. Manconi's staff can get all the necessary work done in advance of the fair freeze, that that's why we needed this. In closing, Mr. Mayor, I want to say how much I appreciate councillor Harder's comments, and I want to share with everybody that, you know, Mr. Manconi and I, I think, have a very good working relationship. I can tell you that he calls me all hours of the night when issues are going on, but I'm at home, and he's usually in the control room, or in one of the stations when things are going on, or he's on the trains with his staff. And I can't thank him enough for the service that he gives our taxpayers. So I really hope that the councillors that disparaged his reputation would make a public apology to him. He has not been lying to us. Thank you, Mr. Manconi, for your service.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, one, the motion by councillor Hubley, second by councillor Cloutier. Notice the motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. I bid motion pour une substance. Councillor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you very much. This is a motion that I'm moving, seconded by councillor Meehan. Whereas in 1910, women delegates from around the world met in Copenhagen to propose that Women's Day become an international event to promote equal rights for women. And whereas the first International Women's Day was held in 1911 with the support of over a million people. And whereas in 1977, the General Assembly of the United Nations officially called for all countries to mark a day for the recognition of women's economic, political, and social achievements. And whereas, we are witnessing a significant rise in women's activism to accelerate women's equality, along with a deepening resolve to reject gender discrimination in all forms. Whereas every year, thousands of events are held around the world to inspire, celebrate, and honor women. Therefore, be it resolved that Ottawa City Council declare March 8th, 2020 to be International Women's Day in the city of Ottawa.
Okay, so we'll debate that next council meeting. There's a desire to carry it now?
Works for me.
On suspension? Agreed. On the motion? Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Menard, do you have a second or for your motion?
Yeah, thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Councillor McKennie has seconded it, and I, and I think you've also written a decree about this particular issue as well, so hopefully it aligns with that. I'll just read the be it resolved, be it resolved that Ottawa City Council oppose Quebec's Bill 21 and support in principle the constitutional challenge to Bill 21, and that Ottawa City Council continue to support building a welcoming city where everyone has access to opportunity prosperity. Be it further resolved that a copy of the motion is forwarded to the Premier of Quebec.
Does anyone wish to carry this now?
No.
No? Okay, we'll bring it back in two weeks. Any other notice of motion for subsequent meeting? Motion to introduce bylaws, motion pour une présentation de règlement. Councillor Luloff, please. Seconded by councillor Moffett.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings, be read and passed.
Confirmation bylaw, councillor Luloff and Moffett.
Let the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of council meeting of February 12th, 2020.
The motion carried. Inquiries, councillor Dudas has a written inquiry. Councillor Dudas, please.
My inquiry is in respect to cyberbullying. And while I would like to build on today's newfound desire for all of us as councillors to work together in respect to a number of motions that we discussed, I think that this is still apt and timely. So I'll read my inquiry. Toxic work environments and the impact on city staff is an issue that has recently come up here at City Hall, and I'm aware that the city is taking steps as to how it can be addressed. However, when we talk about our work environment, we must ensure that this also considers the online world and social media. While my council colleagues, who have been here for multiple terms, can speak more in depth, the past year has seen an exponential increase in the amount of online vitriol directed at city councillors, too often at the instigation of a fellow councillor. Last week, a tweet by one councillor, which was then retweeted by a second councillor, and I quote, said, "I dare Jim Watson to run next election. He would lose. I just wonder when some councillors realize he is a sinking ship and that their jobs are also at risk." Hashtag Watson Club. This tweet was then used as fodder, triggering a chain of other abusive tweets on other councillors, including ones such as, quote, "You're an absolute joke. You are so corrupt and do nothing to advance the city. You're just a Jim Watson robot. How much money did they pay you?" Hashtag Watson Club. Other messages included, quote, "You corrupt Watson Club. B-word. Resign now." In July 2019, a councillor introduced the hashtag Watson Club to Twitter, a term previously only used by a nightclub in reference to its own operations in Uruguay. This hashtag was then used as an attack on those councillors that did not support the councillor's position on an issue. At that time, the Ottawa Citizen and the CBC both ran articles covering the term, the existence of such a club, and noted the divisive nature of this term of council versus previous ones. As a result of this, I have been called lapdog Laura, as well as numerous other more profane, sexual, misogynistic comments that I will not repeat today. Unfortunately, many of these messages also pointedly referenced the hashtag Watson Club. Councilors have been turning to social media to make generalized accusations, dismissing other councillors with whom they disagree. In doing so, we disregard those councillor's rationales and their residents' views, instead opting for defamatory and generalized attacks. Many may suggest that councillors just ignore or block the abuse. However, as we saw when a local federal candidate went to court to seek clarification on whether councillor's social media channels are official methods of communication, a precedent was quickly established that they were in the public realm, and the notion of blocking became a non-starter. Last week, this hit a whole new low. The torrent of abuse that was directed at those councillors who had been duly elected to positions, much of which was sent as a direct reply to the offending tweet, was read by those councillor's parents, children, and friends. As councillors, we would never think to include such an attack in a community newsletter. So why is it acceptable to tweet or to post? To see such a tweet and other councillors supporting these personal attacks and increasing the audience by retweeting is not something I believe any of us want as a council. This is especially ridiculous when that same councillor, an hour later, tweeted about encouraging more women to enter politics. When a councillor knowingly, and I say knowingly because it would, number one, require ignoring all the social media abuse over the past 10 months we have seen, and number two, ignore that female politicians experience online abuse that our male counterparts are spared. When any councillor indirectly encourages such abuse, how can we in good conscience then encourage more women to enter this abusive realm? My inquiry today is directed to the integrity commissioner and to the city clerk. I would like them to report back to council on their leeway to investigate cyberbullying of city staff, councillors, commission members, committee, and board members. Additionally, what existing policies are in place regarding social media behavior by these officials? I am aware that there are rules in place for city staff generally, but I appreciate the unique nature of being an elected official or appointed board member. If there are no existing city-level policies, could city staff include recommendations from other jurisdictions and other levels of government for city council's consideration and implementation? Additionally, include in the report any other jurisdictions punitive measures that may be appropriately fitting for Ottawa as well. Specifically, I asked them to look to the city of Toronto, which implemented a code of conduct regarding social media use for councillors, which includes the two following sections, Article 12, respecting staff. The code of conduct requires members to be respectful of the role of staff to provide professional and politically neutral advice. Members should not use social media to engage in criticism of city staff. The public nature of social media can increase the risk of harming the professional and ethical reputation of city staff. And Article 14, respecting each other and the public. Just as Trontonians expect members of council to maintain decorum at City Hall, they also expect members to act with decorum on social media. Members must never use social media as a platform to treat members of the public, one another, or staff without respect. Members should not engage in or encouraging bullying, flaming, or shaming of any other social media users. These types of interactions on social media misplace the focus of the interaction on attacking individuals rather than engaging in constructive discussion or debate. This manner of communication is inconsistent with the code of conduct and unbecoming of the office that members hold. This inquiry is also a call out to my fellow councillors, committee, commission, and board members to stop it, to rise above this, and I ask all of us to work together as the residents of Ottawa elected us to do. Very few, if any, around this table are wholly innocent. We did not run under party banners. We respect, we represent a wide swath of political views, but that doesn't mean that we cannot work together and collaborate. Because a councillor disagrees or votes against a motion does not mean that there's an ulterior motive that warrants attack into what can be a cesspool of social media. I have a 20-year-old daughter. She is on social media. She reads these things about me, but she contextualizes it. I also have a 10-year-old daughter who is just starting to look at social media. In a world where we are already having to educate our kids, younger and younger, about the dangers of social media, what kind of example are we setting as city leadership? And we are all leaders around this table. When we are turning to social media and publicly attacking each other, and knowingly have our followers attack each other because we can't walk down the hall to have an adult conversation, at the end of the day, the only one being hurt is our city. With every angry tweet we send out, we're hurting Ottawa's reputation to tourists, investors, and also in the eyes of our own residents.
Right, thank you very much, councillor Dudas. Councillor Kavanaugh, there's no comment on inquiries. Do you have an inquiry?
No, I just wanted to...
Okay. Councillor Meehan has an inquiry, please.
I do, thank you, your worship. This inquiry was written up before our revised motion today, but I'm going to continue, I will submit it anyway. Okay. So, this is to ensure the residents and taxpayers of Ottawa have complete confidence in the transparency and integrity of Stage 2 LRT. Could staff please provide the following information? On what basis was the decision made not to partner with Infrastructure Ontario for Stage 2 LRT? Please include the business case used to make this decision. Who authored the procurement documents for Stage 2 LRT? Please provide the specific staff names. Why was the request for proposal for Stage 2 LRT not made public despite this being standard practice in Ontario with redactions? Why did staff not fully explain to council that unlike other delegations of authority they regularly sign with staff, that the delegation of authority on Stage 2 would severely limit our ability to provide oversight? Why was it not made clear to council that a discretionary clause was included in the RFP for Stage 2 LRT? How were the services of the law firm Norton Rose Fulbright obtained? What specifically was their role in the procurement process? Who was their client? City staff with delegation of authority or council? On what basis did the city manager exercise the discretionary clause to allow TNEC's bid to continue in the procurement process despite its failing technical score? Just only two more. What was the rationale behind Norton Rose Fulbright's advice that the city of Ottawa was at risk of litigation if the TNEC's bid was disqualified? And lastly, did the executive steering committee have the expertise needed to properly assess the accuracy and specificity of TNEC's remediation solutions to its technically deficient bid? And please outline their specific technical qualifications. Thank you.
That's it? No comments on inquiries, councillor Elshantier? Do you have an inquiry?
I have a mic. I think I've been here long enough, Mr. Mayor, I understand. My question to the clerk is, can inquiries been common now? Because you already had a motion today been approved unanimously, and then you have another inquiry, it's the same as the motion. So what's that mean in a case like this? What will be the procedures?
Well, if it is, if it is, then...
I'd like to know the procedures.
No, I know, but if, if the questions asked in councillor Meehan's motion are addressed in the motion, that will be the answer that will come back from staff.
And I see the clerk shaking his head. Okay.
Okay. Inquiry by councillor McKennie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With intensification happening in the downtown core, consistent with the current and future directions of the official plan, how is the city assessing the needs for recreation, cultural, and community meeting space in the existing downtown city-owned facilities, taking into account the implications of future population growth, looking for opportunities to expand, acquire, and provide space for future needs? And for methods to pay for enhanced community space through community benefits charges, which are soon replacing soft development charges? Thank you.
Councillor Leeper has an inquiry.
Thank you, Mayor. I posed this question by email on Sunday, but didn't get a reply, so we'll make it as an inquiry. For the Confederation Line, please provide an accounting of the failure deductions assessed against RTMs since revenue service availability. All issues for which the city has agreed there was an excusing cause, inclusive from August 31st until today. For each rolling three-month period of revenue service availability, how many failure points have been assessed? Thank you.
Councillor Luloff, adjournment?
That the council meeting 12th February 2020, stand adjourned. Meeting adjourned, thank you.